Up next on the agenda, we have roll call.
Jim, did you hear him? His system's not working.
So we'll go ahead and just count, Councilor Carson here, since his device is not working. Okay.
Great, Mayor Coleman. All council members are present and a quorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have the agenda approval, Councilor Veho.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Please start voting. Ms. Shawn.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, and that's citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda where we ask those who have filled out comment cards to come up to the podium when I call out your name. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes, which there is a clock over there where we keep time. If you're still talking at the three-minute mark, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that particular time. We'll start off here with the audience that we have here present, and then we'll follow up with the people who are on Zoom. I have a comment card from Ms. Terri Hammond.
I just want to thank the City of Alamosa, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, Police Chief, and all city employees for the work that was done in the recall of District Attorney Alonso Payne. You know, it was an unexpected end, but it was amazing nonetheless. And you all spent your time on and off the clock circulating petitions, gathering signatures, doing the legal and clerical work that was needed to accomplish our goal. And we couldn't have done it without all of you. And I just want to thank you all very sincerely.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work as well, Ms. Hammond. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Shawn, if you could give the participants who are on Zoom instructions of how to raise their hand so we could recognize them and allow anyone in Zoom to make a comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If you are on the Zoom app and you want to speak, you may use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of the screen, or you may press star nine if by phone.
Okay. Seems like I have one hand raised. Lonnie Welch. Okay, you want to let her in? There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I as well wanted to thank you all, the City Council, the Mayor, the City Attorney, the City Manager, and all city employees for all of their work and for their continued support and compassion for the victims of the crimes as well as the victims of the District Attorney's Office. Without the support of everybody throughout the City of Alamosa and the Valley as a whole, this never would have been accomplished. And I just want you all to know how much we do appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Thank you for your courage too. We appreciate you. Okay, I'll turn it back over to our City Manager for follow-up.
Mayor, thank you. As someone who got to see a little bit more behind the scenes on how this worked and seeing how the petitions were coming in and all of that, I just want to take this opportunity to thank Terri and Laney as well because without them, this wouldn't have happened either. And yes, we might have been out collecting signatures, but I know you guys were driving across the valley getting those petitions out and driving across the valley to collect signatures as well. And so it was a valley-wide, and without taking it beyond Alamosa and all of those miles driven and all that effort put in, it just, we wouldn't have accomplished the goal either. So it truly did take everyone coming together to make that successful and to get those signatures collected as quickly as we did made a very big statement. And so I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that too, that while we did play a role and when you have your city attorney having to call the Secretary of State Office because the stuff's confusing, that's when you know it's challenging. And so it took all of us, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Brooks. Okay. All right, Councilor, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, Consent Calendar A.
Mayor, I move that, oh, we're on ceremonial items there.
Oops, sorry. I'm looking at my old notes. Bear with me. There you go. All right, ceremonial items, we have an oath of office for our new council member, Don Krebs. Don, if you would go down there and Ms. Shawn, where are you in?
This is your oath of office. May you raise your right hand? And repeat after me, please. I, Don Krebs.
I, Don Krebs.
Subject to the penalties.
Subject to the penalties.
Of perjury.
Of perjury.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And uphold the Constitution.
And uphold the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
And the Charter and Ordinances.
And of the Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Alamosa.
Of the City of Alamosa.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of Counselor Ward Two.
The duties of Counselor Ward Two.
Which I am about to undertake.
Which I am about to undertake.
All righty. Usually we allow you to say a few words since you have family members here before we get started. If you want to say something before we move on down the agenda, you have a few minutes. You're welcome.
Learning to work the microphone was one of my very first duties, I assure you. I just want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to serve Ward Two. And I realize I don't sit up here by myself. I have the support of my husband. And I know that I'm looking very excited and looking very forward to what we can accomplish in the next year. So thank you for supporting me as well.
Okay, thank you. Welcome aboard. All right, now we're back to business. Here we go. The next item we have is Consent Calendar A. Councilor Veho.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Second up.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Mayor, the motion carried unanimously.
Awesome. Hey, good. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Under Regular Business, Business Brought Forward by City Staff, Resolution Number 12-2022. In addition to Zapata Park, to the City of Alamosa Register Historic Places.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So this designation is for Zapata Park, which is the former site of the Mexican Preparatory School or the Spanish-speaking school. It was one of the two schools that was involved in the Mestis desegregation case of 1914. So the other school is approximately where TSC is. And then the home that belonged to the child and the family associated with the Mestis cases is still a home in Alamosa, but it's privately owned. So there's not, this is kind of our only opportunity to take up an actual place in our city and designate it in association with this landmark case. So in case you're not familiar, which I know all of you are, but just for the members of our public, that was one of the earliest, if not the first, not only Latino desegregation cases in America, but possibly one of the first school desegregation cases. And it was lost for well over 100 years before a historian found it in 2018, I believe. And so ever since, the San Francisco National Heritage Area has been working tirelessly to get this case noticed at the state level and the federal level, and there'll be a formal unveiling of a commemorative statue done at the county courthouse this fall. And my staff and the Historic Preservation Committee have been looking for funding to do interpretive signage at Zapata Park that would depict, we do have photographs of the school, and so it would depict where the school used to be on the site, sort of a photo simulation, and then just really celebrate that this is, you know, a really powerful moment for our community and that it puts Alamosa on the map in many ways. So I am here today to ask for the City Council to designate Zapata Park a historic site.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilor Gregel.
Thank you very much for recognizing this area. It's, for the longest time, that school was like a clubhouse for a youth club. In fact, it was named after Principal Ortega. For a long time, he taught kids there out of box, and there was some kinds of crafts until finally, you know, it turned into a park. I just had those comments, but I wanted to make the motion if anybody else has comments.
I have a quick comment. Just want to also thank the Mestis Project folks who have been doing this for a long time, and it's finally getting out there at the state level. And I'm glad that we're doing it. Our city Historic Preservation Board is doing something with this too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I'll go ahead and make the motion. We pass Resolution Number 12-2022. Addition of Zapata Park to the City of Alamosa Register Historic Places.
Second up.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting.
Mayor, the motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Shawn. Brings us up to the next item on the agenda, the second reading in public hearing for ordinance number 15-2022.
So this is our second reading. We've already kind of highlighted the majority of these changes. A lot of it is housekeeping. Some of it is even as simple as fixing typos. The ones that are potentially ones that need some interpretation, we are changing the liquor store requirements so that instead of it being a permitted use, it's a limited use. That's just to give our public some forewarning that just because it's allowed in your district doesn't mean there's other footwork you have to do. So please contact our office because there are a number of state regulations that restrict where liquor stores can go. So that's more just a way of communicating with our public. We require tiny homes, meet all of the building codes and energy codes as regular homes. Actually, the state just passed legislation that kind of goes along with that same thing, so now it's mirrored in our code. We will allow you to have buildings on your own property less than the 10-foot fire separation. It does not affect your neighbors, but it does allow you to have an accessory building or garage a little bit closer to your house. We are increasing our density in all of our districts, so not quite what it was in our old land use code, but more dense than what we have now and is the difference between us being able to do some of the housing developments that we're trying to achieve throughout the city. And the final, maybe two that are worth discussing are the first block of downtown between Hunt Avenue and Denver. We will allow first-floor offices, so just activating that first block of downtown, getting people moved into some of those vacant buildings, maybe transforming some of the warehouse feel of the first block. And then the final one is moving our sheltered care facilities, group homes, and boarding houses in our industrial district, which, to be honest, is how they already are in Alamosa. It's just recognizing that that's how our community is laid out. And then changing boarding houses to be allowed with a conditional use in our residential district. So just a little more oversight from staff, so.
So what we'll do is we'll open it up for a hearing, and Councilor Carson will follow up with you after the hearing, if that's okay. All right, good. All right, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and open up a public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number 15-2022. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to come up and voice any concerns, please do so at this time. Don't see anyone in the audience coming up to the podium, so now we'll go back to the Zoom participant. See if you want to give them instructions. I don't see anyone in Zoom either, but just in case. Okay, there we go. If you can give them instructions.
Ask them else.
But go ahead and give them instructions for the records, please.
If you are on the Zoom app and want to speak, you may use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of the screen, or you may press star nine if appearing by phone.
Okay, don't see any hands raised on the Zoom, so we'll go ahead now and close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to Councilor, Council. I see Councilor Carson has his mic on.
Rachel, I already know the answer to this kind of, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So that first block designation for offices on the first floor? It goes to where? To what? Just the first, it's just the first block?
It's at Denver to Hunt on Main Street.
Yeah, and this is just a regulation that applies to the Central Business District.
No, and my only curiosity was the old bank, like what, because it doesn't fall into that criteria, right? So it'll be one of those that can't have offices on that floor.
If you're talking about, are you talking about Alamosa State Bank? They are fully aware that they are grandfathered in at this point in time, so they are maintaining that use. So if they do sell it, they're maintaining that office used to be grandfathered in to carry with the building. So they are fully aware of it.
So they sell it, and the next people could keep.
As long as they keep maintaining that use and they don't let it lapse.
And they have been, they've been leasing out the space even throughout COVID.
Yeah, and I just wasn't sure if I was going to change it, or they were grandfathered. Okay, so I didn't know the answer. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Veho.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 15-2022.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Start voting, please.
Mayor, the motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burke. Appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, under Parks and Rec, a motion accepting a bid for Recreation Center HVAC.
Thank you, Mayor. I debated on if I should put this on consent or not, and you'll see why here in a minute. We've been starting to have issues the last couple of years with the control panel for the HVAC system out at the rec center. We have in there the CIP that's approved by Council 50,000 to replace it. We did apply for a grant through DOLA. Unfortunately, it just wasn't competitive enough going up against some of the other projects, so we did not get that. We went ahead and went out for bids, and the lowest qualified bid is 114,397. So that is 64,000 more than what is in the budget, which is why we wanted to receive a motion to authorize us to accept that bid, and we will include it in an upcoming budget amendment. The reason I wasn't sure if I should put it on consent or not is I feel like we have very little choice with this. We have to run the HVAC system if we're going to have the rec center open. And so it is something that we do need. Last year, 2021, did close out the year better than what we budgeted. I will say we are watching our sales tax very closely right now, though, because we are starting to see some trends. But we do feel with maybe some savings of other projects and watching that CIP to see if anything needs to be adjusted that we can absorb the 64,000, but we will be watching it closely. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, all right. Turn it over to Councilor Carson, then Councilor Veho.
So with that bid, did you guys receive a timeframe or ETA as to when they would fix it? Just because in personal experience right now, HVAC companies are super slow and way behind. So I'm just curious as to for that chunk, because that's pretty healthy. Are they going to expedite it at all?
I didn't, I'm. Staff, if someone could help answer that.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. So the engineer who was working on how we would make it compatible with some existing valves or switches or stuff I know nothing about hasn't give us any indication of those supply delays and other stuff that have plagued, say, park bathrooms or any other stuff we're seeing. So I, he has, I don't anticipate it being delayed at all. He has a team working on it, and I think they could go right into getting it going.
Councilor Veho.
Mayor, I'll move that we accept a bid to replace the HVAC controls at the rec center.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, and further discussion, Councilor Gregel.
I have a question. The City Manager, you talked about savings. Is it savings in the recreation? That's where this money's going to come from?
Yes, this will come out of the Recreation Fund.
I thought maybe from General Fund or something else.
No, it would be the Recreation Fund.
Thank you.
Okay. Council, we have a motion. We have a second, and no further discussion. Please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, under Fire, Fire Mitigation Update.
Thank you, Mayor. This actually is not a voting item, and there's still a lot of research that staff is doing, but we wanted to let you know that we are looking at this. We are having these discussions behind the scenes. Some of the maps, and these aren't cleaned up 100% final maps, but there was some work done at the county level as far as fire intensity based on the fuel that's on the property and other considerations. And so the intensity's lowest is green, and it goes all the way up to red with some moderation in between. So this first map is we wanted to sit down and take a look at all city-owned property in areas that we need to identify how we're going to maintain it to reduce the risk from a fire perspective. So obviously, we've got the ranch here. We've got city-owned parks. We've got the wilderness area, which is one that we were paying special attention to. We've got mom trail area, also the cemetery, the area out by St. Benedict's. So these are all city-owned property. So one way of looking at it is based on the fuel that's on the property, what's the fire risk? The other is working with our fire chief in regards to do they abut structures? And so if there is a fire, and it might be maybe a low-risk area, but it's right up against people's fences, then there may still be a treatment that we want to do there that's different. We are breaking up these different properties into different categories. We've got an A, B, and C. So A would be those that just, we need to just mow the property. B would be we just need to mow a fire perimeter type of situation. And then C would be not only do we need to mow a perimeter, but we need to remove the undergrowth. So if you do think of that wilderness area that's just right over here, that would be one of those. So we're not done identifying all of them and all of that, but we are working on it. We are also working on those properties that are within city limits that are privately owned and not built upon. And so we're working on identifying those, what risk there might be, and then applying these same categories. We may need to bring in some ordinance language that makes it clear that the property owner either needs to mow it to keep the brush lower or perimeter, so they have some options type of thing, but we're still having those discussions. Andy is looking at a contract. We're trying to figure out how we can make sure we're maintaining the river and the Hickory Jackson ditch because those are two areas that take specialized equipment that we don't have. And they need to be maintained anyways for other reasons, but also from a fire mitigation purpose as well. So there's just a lot of people with their hands in this, and we are working on it. But with the dry conditions and the fire in Montevista, I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that we are having these conversations.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Thank you and the team for being proactive and looking into this. Okay?
Mayor, I have a question. I didn't see it on the private property right behind my house and right behind Exile. There's a big, there's a big field there that is always. That's right there. This must, that Long Street is Tremont right there, right?
Let me, let me go in closer so I can better.
Kind of follows the, it's a big piece of property that follows the lumberyard going west, right across the street from the tracks there. It's a big area that, and they do keep it mowed, but it's an area that if somebody was to flick a, an area closer to the houses, that thing would really.
So I do, is this the area that's highlighted here? It's like kind of yellow-green type of thing? Is there a? And so again, this is just, these colors are based just on what's growing there. But then that's where we're also including the fire chief's direction in regards to how close is it to structures and those types of things as well. So we haven't, what we're going to struggle with, though, is if it is this area, that's within the county. And so we're going to have to have some discussions with the county because you'll see there's a lot of big parcels right outside the city limits that do bump up right against some of our neighborhoods. And so we haven't started any discussions with the county from that perspective.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you for the update. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, Committee Reports. We have Councilor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I was fortunate enough to attend the tree board on the 13th. They are always a fun group, and I enjoy them a lot, so I'm excited. Councilor Hensley and I get to share them. They had some good ideas about trying to put all of the tree ordinances in one spot on our website, that there are some things. And so we talked a little bit of logistics around that. I'm not sure how that could, you know, go, but that's something that they are interested in. The other thing that they were asking about is like the tree rules when one neighbor is concerned about another neighbor's tree and how that goes, and if there's, you know, technically not damage. And one of the things that we talked about, which I think is true just for everyone in general, is how do we encourage people to have good, respectful, positive conversations with their neighbors, right? How do we help people increase that communication and just really encourage them to do that and not necessarily rely on the city to solve challenges that they can hopefully solve themselves? And then there was a discussion about ash trees, ash trees? And that some of the things that may be hurting those trees and what we can do to protect them, and they're going to continue looking into that. But we have some really cool experts on that, on that board, and they have a ton of knowledge and are willing to do a lot of the cool work that that board does. So, but it was a really good meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Councilor Hensley.
I have a question for, uh.
Go ahead, Councilor Gregel.
That program where you use, buy a tree and they pay for half of it, is that still going, or is there a deadline on that?
Yes, that is still going, so they can, there's a split cost with that. And I think there's still an application on the city's website, and so they do, they would really like people to do that because I don't think there's been a lot of takers on that.
Okay, thank you all. Councilor Hensley?
So I had two different meetings, and one sort of ties into the other. So the first one was the marketing board. We are in the bid process for the RV park and, not RV park, RV parking, sorry. And depending which way is chosen, if it goes concrete, very good chance it could be done by November or December. If it goes asphalt, probably won't get finished till April. If the asphalt happens, they'll do everything and prep for it, so it could still. so it could still be kind of used, but just how the difference between concrete and asphalt is. So that's sort of the update there. Obviously, the first Fridays are going gangbusters. And so that kind of lends into the Main Street board as well. So kind of crossover between the two boards. And so with that, the first Fridays have just grown tremendously month after month. And the downtown is loving it. I think our community is loving it. And it's just really accelerating. So continuing that, keeping that momentum going. And then the idea of the next one will be focused in on saying goodbye to some of the arts, right? That's leaving.
That will be September.
Sorry, September. Yeah, sorry, September. And then there will be the reception on the sixteenth and the seventeenth. So really trying to ramp up the whole art excitement and energy and trying to keep going with what's happening on the first Fridays. So a lot of activities that are being planned, both Friday and Saturday, they're going to tie into the society hall event on Friday. The Salida Circus is coming, just a lot of different things. Alma is going to have music playing all around. So really looking at all the different arts. And then with that, Delmar is planning to be in J.C. Penney's sometime in September. And this fall, there should be ground broken for Friday health.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. That brings us down to staff announcements.
We do not have any announcements.
Wow. Okay, then. Okay, council comments. Any council comments? Counselor Beal?
Thank you, Mayor. Just so council knows, I'm Roxy and the, and the girls are heading to Denver on Friday, awaiting the birth of our child. So for the, for the time being, we're going to be up there. And any meeting or work session we have, I will be on Zoom, if that's okay with you all. Thank you.
You're welcome, Counselor Beal. Yes, Counselor Gregel.
I, I wanted to get an update on the council and staff deals that you guys are having that were, we set up that we were talking about early. See how those are coming along? The one you did at the park and they did, they did at the roast.
So as what we have set up to be able to meet residents in an informal type of situation is we have a monthly coffee with a counselor. And so we have counselors who will kind of take one each per month and then they'll be matched with a staff person. It's at the roast at seven AM. And I forget is it the, which Thursday it is. But the first one we had, we did not have anyone show up. But I do feel like the more we continue it and the more it stays as a regular, that we will start to see some individuals. The second item that we had was once a month at the farmer's market. And I'll let Counselor Hensley talk about how that went.
So Rachel and I did that. We partnered. It was really well received. Many people were very happy, even if they didn't have a question or a comment, just the fact that we were doing that, making ourselves really accessible. And then we did, we both, Rachel and I, had a lot of people came up with comments, questions, things like that. So I think it was really well received. And so we, we were at a little better situation just because we had the traffic already there. So, but it was good.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Daniel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So congratulations, Jan. I wish you the best as those, as everything transpires. Yes, no one came to coffee with the counselor on our first day, but it was super fun. And Heather and I got to hang out and drink really good coffee. So it, it worked out fine. I really just wanted to welcome Don to council and say I'm really excited to have you on board. And I think it is going to be, we, I think we are a strong team. I think Counselor Carson says this a lot,